Hello and welcome to City Council's Post Agenda on Child Care Funding Programs in Pittsburgh and the State of Child Care. My name is Deborah Gross. I am the council member for District 7. Happy to be here today, and we're joined by Councilwoman Barb Warwick and Councilwoman Erica Strasburger. I'm not sure if there's any other council members online. Today, we have a panel of guests to talk about expenditures and outcomes that City Council has made to invest in both the quantity and quality of childcare, because we know that both things are a problem in the city. We know that families are struggling to find childcare to put their kids in, and we know that other families are struggling to pay for it. And so, we can do a lot better. We know that there are parts of the city that are dramatically underserved by childcare, and we should invest to create new childcare seats in those neighborhoods. There's been a long history of now, the 10 years that I've been here, of City Council investing in childcare. In 2014, there were four women on council. There's four women on council again, which is wonderful. And at the time, it was myself, Council President Teresa Cale Smith, Councilwoman Darlene Harris, and Councilwoman Natalia Rudiak. And we created a position in the administration to work on early childcare during budget season. We also moved aside about $250,000 and spent $15,000 to do one of the first studies that I'm aware of, of where are childcare centers? And we hired Pacey at the time, and So Trying Together now, to do that work and to kind of brief council on what was needed, what were assets, and where do we have deficiencies? And we've continued to do that work. Several years later, the council moved $2 million to invest in childcare centers. And we are eager to see the outcomes of that today. Unfortunately, those monies, those first monies, that $250,000 and the $2 million didn't move for quite a number of years. But luckily, we kept pushing, and they did move, luckily right before COVID hit. And I think that's part of the story that we should hear about today. I like to point out, because this is so funny, that the first time I worked on childcare policy, it was, I think it was early 1997, and we were doing this manual, which had been created in September 1995 in North Carolina. And it is how to start or expand your childcare center. And I literally have an entire banker's box in my basement, including this, because it was such gratifying work. It was such impactful work. And we were working on uplifting the quality of childcare in North Carolina, because at that time, it was at the bottom of the nation in the rankings. And so, it was really impactful policy work. We did launch a class with our SBDC on how to create and expand a childcare center, including this three-and-a-half-inch floppy disk, which taught you how to do a cash flow analysis, so you could keep track of your revenue and expenditures, and make sure you were in the black and not the red. And I spent a lot of time on the phone with childcare operators as they called in for our micro lending program. So, that's nearly 30 years. So, without much delay, I'll say that our invited guests today are Catherine Murray from the URA, Emily Neff from So Trying Together, Kara, we don't have Kara at the table, so we're missing Kara, but Kara Simonella has been critical in this work from So Trying Together, Leslie Crawford, ABK Learning and Development Center. We're really happy to have you. And then Anne Flitt Schlicht and Mitra Salida. Did I say those names okay? Safety?
Yes.
From the Chatham University Center for Women's Entrepreneurship. So with that, are we all, is everybody all set with their presentations? Wonderful. I'll turn it over to Catherine Murray at the URA. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Murray. I'm the Director of Commercial Lending at the URA, as well as the Director of, Program Director at Invest Pittsburgh, our affiliate community development financial institution. Let me just pause and make sure I'm getting this in presentation mode. One moment, please. Let me see here. I think we're just going to keep moving. Okay. So, I'm grateful for the opportunity to highlight our efforts to support childcare businesses in the city and nonprofits. Two years ago, we launched the Childcare Reinvestment in Business, otherwise known as CRIB, Forgivable Loan Program. This financing tool provides up to $25,000 for childcare providers in the city. The primary use of these funds is for working capital and minor facility improvements. We designed this program to be flexible financing for pressing needs facing childcare facilities, including hiring and retaining staff, providing enrollment subsidies for families facing financial hardship, especially due to the pandemic, and ever-pressing maintenance and facility So, since launching CRIB, which is our forgivable loan program, we have assisted 28 businesses and deployed over $791,000 to childcare providers, the bulk of which are women and minority-owned businesses. This capital is making a difference. We capture data one year after loan closing, when the businesses can apply for complete loan forgiveness. I'm happy to report that of the loans we have forgiven to date, 100% are still in business, 73% have increased their enrollment, 64% have hired additional staff, and I'm especially proud to report that six of our CRIB borrowers have increased their Pennsylvania Star rating since receiving CRIB funds. This increase of quality of care allows businesses to receive a higher subsidy rate from the state. And since we have launched this, we have also allowed now businesses to come back for a second award, once they have their first award forgiven. 12 of those 28 businesses have applied for and received a second award, which is a total of 40 awards. Pictured here on this slide is one of our CRIB borrowers located in Garfield, called Each One Teach One, run by Dr. Dominique Thornhill. She originally started as a childcare home provider in Beltshever that the URA supported with a microloan. She's now closed that facility, but it's grown to two new facilities, one just outside the city in Edgewood. And pictured here is her new location on Penn Ave in Garfield, which was supported both by a URA Minority Business Loan and our CRIB program in addition to that. One of our other borrowers I want to highlight is Davis Family Childcare, located in Homewood. This home-based facility is led by Ms. Tamea Davis, an experienced professional dedicated to improving quality of care in her community. Ms. Davis used her first award for working capital and improvements, and after her first CRIB award was forgiven, she applied for a second award in order to hire additional staff and grow her enrollment. I'm proud to say that Davis Family Childcare is now a four-star center. When they originally started with us, they were a two-star center. So, to complement the CRIB forgivable loan program, the summer of 2021, we started talking to our colleagues at Chatham about developing an industry-specific course for childcare providers, much like you talked about in your days in North Carolina. So, we partnered with Brittany Wright, an experienced childcare business owner, to develop this course curriculum. Brittany and her team at Wright Childcare Solutions thoughtfully designed a course that prepares entrepreneurs to launch new childcare businesses in the city. This course is delivered by the talented staff at Chatham University Center for Women's Entrepreneurship. Over the past two years, over 85 current and budding business owners have completed this course, the bulk of whom are minority women. Throughout the course, we assist participants in developing business plans and inform them about the CRIB program, in addition to other low-interest financing available at the URA to help with their business. Additionally, we've partnered with So Trying Together to pilot a shared services alliance in which childcare providers can access services at a lower rate for marketing, legal, and financial resources. I want to touch on a few challenges that we continue to hear from, to hear about from our CRIB borrowers, and I know that my colleagues are going to get into this in a lot more detail than I. One of the first things that we noticed is there is a lot of reluctance to apply for anything called a loan. We know that these businesses are operating on such slim margins, even if the term forgivable loan, I think, has been a barrier to getting CRIB financing out there. And we have worked with a lot of external partners on this to try to make sure that we are teaching folks about what this means and making sure that they know that they can access this financing. We also want to ensure that people know about our low-interest financing that can help outside of the CRIB program. The URA has financing well below market rate, as low as 3%, which is really unheard of right now. And so, we are really trying to work with new entrepreneurs to stack some of our resources when they're trying to open their businesses. We limit CRIB to licensed centers, because we don't want to give money out the door and then have a center never open. So, if they need additional capital to open to their doors, then we really try to match them with one of our low-interest financing term loans instead. One of the other challenges that I know my colleagues are going to highlight as well is identifying affordable brick-and-mortar space in the city and navigating permitting issues as well. So, in closing, I just really want to thank you all for this opportunity. I want to thank Councilmember Gross for her leadership and support on these efforts. You're a true champion of the childcare industry, and you understand firsthand the challenges faced by families and business owners alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. I am going to just hand it over next to Emily Neff from So Trying Together. And just as a reminder, that I think you probably have covered in your presentation, but that was a $2 million award that was the money that I referred to that City Council set aside in, I think, late 2017 in the 2018 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just make sure I have my slides all ready. Thank you, Councilmember Gross. It was great to hear, there we go, it was great to hear the history of childcare and your childcare advocacy, and I'm looking forward to really digging in a little bit to do like a refresher of the foundation of what's been happening in childcare in the state since COVID, and what that looks like in Pittsburgh, and how the Childcare Quality Fund fits into that. My name is Emily Neff. I'm the Director of Public Policy at So Trying Together. And so, just to get us started, this is just a quick overview of the early childhood education landscape. And so, when we think about the landscape, it's a mixed delivery system that's really meant to meet, meant to meet the needs of parent-working families. And this can occur in a commercial space, like a larger childcare center, or in home-based spaces, like a group childcare home or family childcare home. In the city of Pittsburgh, there are 176 licensed programs, and these programs can serve children anywhere from six weeks to about 12 years of age. And so, when we, when we talk about funding and financing the system, it is a complex funding system. It is largely private pay, based on what, you know, parents and what they can afford. There are public funding, and so, just here are some examples of the options in Pennsylvania available to programs and to families. So, we have, you know, the public pre-K counts program, as well as state and federal Head Start Funds, as well as the Childcare Works subsidy. And we're here today to talk about the Childcare Quality Fund. So, just to think about quality for a moment, is we really think, this is Pennsylvania's Quality Rating Improvement System, is Keystone Stars. We think of the high quality as Star III and Star IV, or NACI accredited or considered high quality. These are really standards that are based in research practices that improve the outcomes of young children. And we like to say, the key ingredient is a well-trained and qualified workforce. And to think about then in terms, in what it looks like in Pennsylvania, and with the high quality, the percentage of high-quality capacity, I wanted to pull just a few stats of looking at Pennsylvania. Across the state, it's 46% of programs have capacity that is considered high-quality. In the county, it's 41%. In the city of Pittsburgh, it's 57% of programs. So, I do want to note that strength within the city, that we still have a long way to go, but also, I think it's really important to note that, you know, we do have a higher rate than in the state and in the county, and we know that, you know, the city is committed to really working towards that, to make the best for the children in the city. And so, before we dive into the Childcare Quality Fund, I just want to highlight what's happening right now with policy issues. I'm sure many of you have seen that the, some of the childcare funding is about to expire in about, in a few days, and there's a potential government shutdown at the federal level. And we have, we will still have discretionary childcare development block grant funds that will expire next September. In the PA budget this year, we did receive an increase of 104 million, which maintains the current subsidy reimbursement rate at the 60th percentile. Unfortunately, pre-K was level funded for the first time in 10 years. And so, I think what I want to highlight is coming really back to that the key ingredient is the workforce, is that there was no state investment in the childcare workforce or supports from the state to invest in quality. Low compensation leads to a staffing crisis that we've been hearing about, which leads to decreased access for families. And what that can look like on a program level, that we're hearing from so many, so many programs, is that that is a growing waitlist, yet empty classrooms. And just to give you a quick stat, I don't, I didn't have anything for the city, but in Allegheny County, there are 508, 508 open positions in childcare programs, leading to 5,851 children on waitlist. I also want to point out that this is only about a sixth of the programs that took this survey. So, I think about what that number could be if all programs had participated. And so, where does the Childcare Quality Fund fit in? As you know, it has really provided a much-needed boost to improve and help providers maintain quality efforts. It's not just, it's hard to move up, and it can be often a barrier at times, but it's also very costly, as I'm sure you and Leslie talk about, to maintain a Star III and Star IV. And so, in looking at the Childcare Quality Fund, 80 childcare providers in the city of Pittsburgh have received more than $1.72 million in rewards, in awards to improve quality. That funding has prioritized providers that serve over 50% of families utilizing Childcare Works, the Childcare subsidy. And it has funded, supported funding for childcare programs across all star levels and provider type. And so, again, it's really about not just, you know, it's supporting providers in moving up, but that maintaining, that cost to maintaining high quality, that also went into really supporting providers to help maintain quality. And I do have a few testimonies that I wanted to share before I pass it along to Leslie. But we talked with many of the providers who received the CCQF funds. Brittany Wright Burley was also one of the providers we spoke with, and she talked about how important it was to have this funding for programs like hers, that they can't pass on costs to their families, and that the city investing in something like a quality fund that really helps them to maintain, maintain that, make sure that they can use, have other financial freedom to invest in their staff and retaining their staff, which is, again, really the crisis the field is facing. And they didn't have to choose between paying a fair wage and making sure their staff could afford to live and have renovations done. And then, they also did not have to pass that cost on to families, and it really was able to enhance their programming and make the much-needed renovations. And then, from a couple of home-based providers, I wanted to highlight as well. One, Dana Jones at Simply Kids Own Early Learning Childcare. She spoke about how it can be really difficult to apply for funding, especially when there's not, for smaller programs who don't have that administrative support, and that this process was not hard for her, and she was really able to understand what she was, you know, the process, get her paperwork in, and was really grateful to know that there was, there was funding to really support a safe environment for her children and families. And then, also that, again, it's really about small businesses. Many childcare programs are small businesses. Tamea Davis, you know, shared that it really helped her to keep operating her business. She was in the process of moving up in her Stars, and because of this funding and the CRIB funding that she was able to get, she was able to reach that Star IV, when many home-based providers struggle to get, to overcome some of those barriers. And so, you know, I have some, I have more leave-behind information I can leave with you today surrounding some of the Childcare Quality Fund, and happy to take questions at the end. And thank you for having us.
Thank you, Emily. I am really glad that you gave us some of that background information about the landscape of childcare, and I wrote down the number, 176 licensed programs in the city, and that the city of Pittsburgh has a higher percentage of the programs that are high-quality.
Yes, higher quality.
Thank you. Okay, very good information, and we'll get back to that, I assume, in a few minutes, because we know that since the beginning of the pandemic, childcare is really struggling, and that statewide, it's really, the industry has really taken a hit, and parents have fewer and fewer options all the time. Great. So, next, we get to hear from our childcare, an actual childcare operator, firsthand, firsthand, Ms. Crawford. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about your program.
My name is Leslie Crawford. I am the Director and Owner of ABK Learning and Development Center. This is located on Bedford Avenue in the Hill District. My facility is a 24-hour facility, so we operate 24 hours, six days a week. It used to be seven prior to the pandemic, but the pandemic sort of changed things for us, and so now, we're just doing it six days a week. And part of that has to do with staffing and our inability to hire staff, number one, because we don't have the finances or the resources to do it. But what we were able to do, from us receiving the grant or the funding, was to filter monies elsewhere. So, I was able to take some of the monies that I have in my own budgets to sort of increase salaries or wages for my staff, and then free up the money from the, from the funding to actually purchase materials and items to enhance our program, so that we still remained in that quality. You have to look at the standards, and there are a lot of them, and the quality speaks to every level that they have there. In order for us to continue to be a Star IV facility, we have to walk a thin line sometimes, which one are we going to sacrifice? And I never want to sacrifice my staff, simply because they've been with me so long, and they're the ones that keep us open and keep our families employed, because that's the most important part of it. So, we use a lot of it, like my colleagues had spoken in their, in their conversations with So Trying Together and Emily, about how useful it was for us to have that funding in order for us to divert monies to our staff, so that we can retain them, which is, oh my God, is so important at this point. I was also able to hire staff, and I haven't been able to do that with, in the last two years post-COVID. I wasn't able to, but I was able to hire them. And in doing that, having the ability to move them from just coming in at the entry level, to move them, to put them in courses, so that they can get the education that's required in order for me to maintain that Star IV level. They have to have a CDA, and in order to do that, they have to be in some type of educational program in order for us to reach that goal, to maintain the status of that Star IV. And so, we are able to place those teachers in that while maintaining the staff that I currently have, because the CDAs only, they expire after two years, and so you have to renew them. And so, we need finances and monies in order for us to continue to keep doing that, to keep the staff right where they need to be. In addition to that, providing professional development, which is a requirement in order for us to maintain the high quality that we do have. So, those things have been critical for us, and I thank, I thank the city of Pittsburgh and everybody for allowing us to have access to that money. It gave me, as a director and an owner, a space where I didn't have to stress as much, because I knew that I had something that I could fall back on, or I didn't have to tell my employees, no, that we couldn't do something, just based on the fact that we didn't have the financial stability in order for us to do it. So, I appreciate all of you here and what you do, and how much work you provide for us to be able to do what we do. My families greatly appreciate it. I don't know what they would do without us being there. I've been, my families have been with me, a lot of them, since I opened. That's like seven years going into eight years. I've raised their children from babies and transitioned them to school facilities, and then I had them back in the evenings, when their parents are working these 12-hour shifts that they need me to get them and provide care for them until they get home in the evening. So, I thank you guys and the monies, because it was, it offered me the opportunity and ability to be able to do that. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We have one last presentation, which will allow us a substantial amount of time. And just for the record, I asked the speakers to keep it really tight, so that we could have enough time for questions and answers. So, you know, get your questions ready, because I think there's a lot more that they know that we haven't heard from. So, our final presentation is Chatham University Center's Women's Entrepreneurship.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anne Flynn Schlicht. I'm the Director for the Center for Women's Entrepreneurship at Chatham University, and I have my colleague Mitra here with me today. And we're going to be talking today specifically about a program we launched in 2021, which is called the Business of Childcare. And as Congresswoman Gross mentioned earlier, she had a binder. We have a binder too. So, this is our binder here, with no floppy drive, but we do have a binder for the program. And we are going to talk a bit more about this program today. So, on the screen, you will see the syllabus for the Business of Childcare. This is a startup program. So, the goal of putting this program together, as my colleague Catherine at the URA mentioned, was really to support women who, and men, we've had men participate in this program, in looking at starting a childcare business in the city of Pittsburgh. The program is covers for all childcare providers, both family, group, and center-based. And it covers both the permitting and the licensing and the whole process in getting licensed as a childcare provider, but also the business of childcare. So, we really go into, want to making sure these providers understand that this is a business, and that's kind of our core competencies, is what we do, is we educate people in terms of running profitable businesses. So, we cover topics in terms of just, you know, what is your goals and missions for starting out this business, registering your business with the state and with the city of Pittsburgh, and also putting a budget together for what your proposed business is going to be, in this case, childcare. We also cover as well, this is our fall schedule, so we are taking a break for Halloween, but you will also see there, we cover staffing and onboarding. And as Ms. Crawford mentioned a while ago, that is one of the biggest challenges all businesses, but especially in the childcare industry, is facing right now. So, we go to different areas in terms of looking at staffing and onboarding, and where we can recruit employees. We bring in our colleagues from So Trying Together to talk about their organization and what their role is, and how they can support you when you go to launch your childcare business. And then, we also look at funding, because every business needs funding. So, we talk about the different funding options that's available for your business. We talk about the CRIB program that Catherine mentioned earlier, and once you're licensed, how you can apply for that. But especially if you're looking at a center, you know, what are the costs? What are your budgets, and what are your costs? And breaking that down, where the funding options would be few to operate in the city of Pittsburgh. And then, at the end of the program, we have everybody present their concepts to a panel. It's encouragement, enforcement for them as well, and really to outline their next steps. Next slide. So, this program is an eight-week program. We have, we've launched the program in fall 2021, and this is just a quick breakdown here. So, the startup cohort, we've had four cohorts of that, and we've, you can see kind of the breakdown, 15, 21, 14, and 16 is the average in each, in each class. And again, a lot are African-American, identify as African-American, Native American, or Asian-American participants in the class. And then, we ran two cohorts as well of the existing programs. So, the existing course we ran was really to support and identify the needs that existing providers has. Ms. Crawford was in that program, and, you know, one of the things we heard from participants there was, A, staffing, but also about productivity, operations, use of software. We talked a lot about that, in terms of operating and keeping your reports in line for the station for reimbursement, how to be a smarter business owner, right? And those areas. So, we had lots, and it was a great opportunity as well for existing providers, all throughout the city, to meet, to come together, some were families, some were center bears, to share, share practices as well, and see how they could resource. So, great program. Thank you. Next slide. One of the other areas we offer, in addition to the Business of Childcare training, is our center provides entrepreneurs with free business counseling and technical assistance. So, often, when they're starting out, they're very passionate about taking care of children and want to open a business, but they need to learn as well about, okay, legal aspects of operating a business, legal aspects of hiring employees, in terms of how do, you know, once I'm licensed, how do I get families to find out about me? Social media. When you're, when you're working and operating a business, when you're working with children, you have to be, know the laws when it comes to social media. with children, you have to be, know the laws when it comes to social media. And marketing. We cover areas of HR and hiring and hiring policies. Uh, we cover a lot in accounting and how you keep your books, how you file for reimbursements, how you pay your taxes, um, all of those areas. So these are all additional resources that, um, the participants can schedule one-on-one with all the counselors that they may have. Uh, one area that has been used a lot, I will say is the legal, um, support that we can offer. Um, just being able to sit with an attorney for an hour to go through legal aspects. I'm looking to lease a building, maybe in the Hill District, drawing East Liberty, you know, um, I'm, I, most of these people have never signed a lease agreement before. So help me understand what this lease agreement means. So these are areas that, um, we, our counselors can help the business owners with. Next slide. So I just wanted to put up here some, uh, new or soon-to-be, uh, opening childcare providers, uh, and I think might be crossover from some that Emily mentioned in her presentation as well. Uh, so the Maker Clubhouse After School, um, program, a summer program is in Homewood. That's Dr. Wallace with her program there in Homewood, support their community. Uh, she's going through the licensing process right now. Should be open soon. Uh, Giving Heart is a childcare facility that was running summer programs, who very, very differently, actually, um, in order to find a space, purchased, uh, an old school up on Arlington, Old Arlington School, and is now renovating it to open as a childcare facility. So again, being a bit creative in finding a space. We have another, uh, Douglas Academy, which is in Homestead. Um, we're looking here, London Bridges, which is a childcare center in East Liberty, uh, has, has a very long waiting list and is doing very well, but would like to expand. Um, and then we have some as well, you can see in Brookline, Penn Avenue, I believe, um, Katrin from the URA mentioned about each one, teach one, uh, participated in our existing program to help open her facility on Penn Avenue and on the north side there. And then we have family providers as well. So a lot of people, you know, a lot of people when they're starting out, you know, they have to be comfortable with as well, not just in terms of taking care of kids and, but also the risks that they might be undertaking. So a lot of people like to start smaller. And so we're there to support them, maybe even doing it family childcare. And a lot of, some of the examples you heard earlier, a lot of people started as family childcare providers and then move into a group or into center-based. So it's a, you know, it's getting the comfort level. Next slide. So one of the things we did in just in preparation for today is we reached out to about 15 to 20 participants who've gone through the training program that we have done, the Business of Childcare, to get some feedback on their process, all right, and moving forward. This example here of some that have, um, moved forward, but there's still some that are struggling, right? Struggling to move forward in their, in their dream of opening a childcare facility. And, um, some of the comments we got back, I'll share with you, but, uh, like I said, there is a lot of progress being made in supporting high-quality, uh, programs in the city. Uh, Emily from Trying To Get Her mentioned that, uh, in the percentage. Um, and our, our goal is really to support the providers, uh, with business education so they can operate, um, businesses and both for their families, but also for, um, their staff as well. Next slide. So here's some of the comments that we heard back, both from new and existing providers. Uh, and reiterating what you heard before is finding staff. This is something that this industry is really, really, um, finding difficulties is finding staff. And if you're a center-based, you have to have a director, right? So that me, requires individuals that have a certain educational background and also then you, you know, in terms of higher salary base. So that is, if, if we're looking at one of the top challenges is finding staff. The second area is access to funding, uh, to afford rent. You probably all know this, but rent price, the rent has gone up dramatically, right? So, uh, and again, this is an industry that is struggling, uh, to find affordable rent, uh, to pay for renovations. A lot of, uh, providers have found spaces, but again, the cost of supplies, and if any of you've done renovations, the cost of renovations has dramatically increased, mostly 30 to 40%. So that's another area. Some of them got quotes last year, 12 months ago. Now they've started to raise some money and gone back to the same contractors and their prices have gone up 30 to 40%. Uh, another area is when they're starting out a childcare facility, they need inventory, right, to educate the children, again, staffing. And then often as well, because there's a lot of regulations in this area, area, you need to have good software to make sure that you're keeping all your reports on your family and your children and, and recording that. Cash flow. Uh, again, margins are very, very tight in childcare. Uh, you have to watch every penny, and I'm sure Leslie will confirm that, she will, uh, that where you're putting your money. And, um, and some of it is as well is, and still provide an affordable service to your families. Uh, again, I think more value needs to be placed in this industry and the service they're providing. Finding spaces that meet all the childcare requirements. This is an area we hear a lot. Um, you know, we hear from people, there's plenty of office spaces that are available in the city. Why can't you open your childcare there? Well, they don't, they don't meet the requirements. They won't meet the requirements. And one of the requirements is outdoor space, right? So I was reading up on this yesterday, and I'm sure my colleague from Trying Together can cover this more. But, you know, children from all ages are required to have anywhere between 15 to one hour outside every day, weather permitting, right? So that can be very hard, you know, finding a play area outside, but also just being outside with children for one hour of the day. Uh, so that's an area that's a challenge. And then, um, in terms of for those that are starting out is the occupancy permit and zoning. Next slide. So just to cover this a bit better, um, getting an op- occupancy permit is required in order to get licensed. And it's kind of a two-part process, um, both in deeming that the structure is safe, uh, for the children to enter and exit, um, and that falls under the uniform code, Uniform Construction Code, but also the second part is zoning. So this is in order to get licensed, to move forward, to get access to the crib and all the other resources. This is a permit that all the providers need. Next slide. And here's some feedback that we got from individuals. And again, these are in people who are looking to open a business, is, um, there is a lot of confusion on the side of the approval process when it comes to zoning. Um, uh, there's also zoning has rules and then DHS has a different set of rules. Uh, and there is no common ground between the two. This is just feedback I have received. Uh, finding spaces that are accessible for parents and staff, as well as affordable to operate a childcare and comply with city zoning and ordinance is a big hurdle. So there's a lot of criteria, as you can see, coming into place there. So, and again, having a clear understanding of the process. And I have one last slide and we're done. So some just suggestions, uh, that were given to us from our, our clients was, um, a checklist of all the items, uh, needed for an application, occupancy application. You know, when we work with DHS and there's, checklists are always good, getting people down through, and also they know where they're working on through the process. A flow chart of a timeline and fees. Again, that's really important because sometimes there's a lot of fees that comes up that they haven't put into their budget when they're trying to open their operations. Um, and then a list of any other kinds of additional information or documentation that might be needed once, um, you're requested, once your application is provided. Uh, so these are just, there's some others there as well, but in, in, in time, I'll wrap up and thank you for your attention and happy to address any questions.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. Um, we are joined by Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith, Councilwoman Coghill, and Councilwoman Wilson. Um, sometimes we take the council people in the order that they, uh, came into chambers, first come, first served. Councilwoman Warwick was first, but if you don't mind, Councilwoman, I'm going to defer to Council President, um, who has worked on this issue as long as I have at City Council and, um, also is, um, ready with her questions, if you don't mind. Yeah.
First, I do want to say, uh, thank you to Councilwoman Gross and to my colleagues on council for making sure that we allocate funding for these, for these efforts. And we did start this kind of stuff, uh, when, how long has it been?
2014.
2014. So it's slow wheels of government, I guess. But I want to say that part of what I've heard here is a lot about businesses, uh, brick and mortar storefronts or places like that. Is there any help for home-based? Could anybody talk, address that? Home-based, um, care?
Yes, um, I ca- I'm, yeah.
Go ahead, please.
So we're running a program, uh, in addition to the Business of Childcare, we're also working with Trying Together and we're running a program right now for home-based childcare. So we just, uh, we offered two cohorts last fall and now we have another one as well, just focused specifically on home providers.
Cause I think that there's a lot of, obviously there's a lot of need and help across the city. There's, you know, we definitely need, I actually think the city of Pittsburgh should start a program here. And I think we, the URA should start an incentive program to help businesses put, um, childcare programs with, so people can get back to work, so people can get downtown or wherever it is that they need to get a job. My, I watch my, uh, grandkids sometimes because my kids have the same, I have eight grandchildren and I never thought that I would be at the point where I'm taking care of my grandchildren and my 102-year-old mother. So, so between the two, there's no time for Teresa. But I want to say that I think that, um, had they had reliable childcare, um, we wouldn't have to worry about this kind of stuff. But sometimes during, since COVID, I can't tell you the times that their childcare facilities have called off or had to stop, you know, so somebody, families are like really, I mean, it's really a, a difficult time. I'm sure you all know this. I'm not going to, you know, preach to the choir, but I just, my concern was, one that we did also, I want to make sure that we bought up and we did, Councilwoman Gross actually did a lot of work in this area with, um, child, outdoor facilities and the need for childcare and outdoor play and that kind of stuff. So I'm glad to hear it continuing, but I, um, do want to say that I think that, I'm really proud of the Women's Caucus because it was a, an effort of the Women's Caucus, you know, back before it was popular to talk about childcare. And now I think that, that our colleagues on council, everybody's feeling it, our colleagues that, you know, the male counterparts here that have kids. And I said, one of the things I would love to do before I leave is make sure that we have some facility, some kind of help here in the city-county building for the employees and the, and the council members who have kids here. They shouldn't have to worry about the kids, whether try and take care of everybody else's kids and try to do some of the great things that we do in the city. So I would love to see our staff and our, our colleagues have, have those options. But I would really love to see some incentive program through the URA to incentivize businesses to open childcare facilities. And I'd like to make sure we're not forgetting the home-based childcare because they're probably the ones with the least amount of resources. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you all for your work.
Absolutely. And I just can't thank you enough for your leadership on this too. And, and we are just really in agreement on this. On behalf of the URA Invest Pittsburgh, we are trying to invest in home-based providers as well. And in terms of the crib forgivable funds that we've given out, um, about half of those have gone to home-based providers. And we're, we hear from home-based providers every week that want to open a childcare center too.
I see them sometimes. It's like, I feel like, yeah, sometimes I feel like going over a rescue on a kid, like, you know, they just need, they just need a little bit of, you know.
Absolutely.
Hey, I needed help too. I was a young mom, you know, and I need help too. So I understand it. So.
I hear you. And I also, thank you for your bold leadership on saying that we need better solutions for public sex, public sector employees downtown too. And we need to support, um, primarily women that are, you know, struggling to fill this need. I'm in the home as well. And I would love to, to pursue that, that big idea with you.
I would love that. Okay. Thank you. I will just say this, we don't pay a lot. We make you pay for parking. Let's give some incentives to actually work. If you want to attract the best and the brightest, you got to, you have to give a little bit too. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to just add that you thank you and I very much wholeheartedly agree. Um, and as well with the crib loans, um, just about half, of half the programs that receive CCQF funds also were home-based. So we do know that that can be a huge barrier. Stars is very, can be difficult for home-based providers. Um, so that, that was, that was a very important to make sure that, you know, CCQF funds were getting out to home-based providers.
Fantastic. Is that all, Council President?
That's it. I could go on forever with this subject, but go ahead. So go ahead. Thank you. I'll shut up.
There's, we'll be talking more, but we'll keep talking, I'm sure, after the post-agenda. So I appreciate that. Uh, so why don't we go back to, um, our normal order and I'll go next to Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, sure. Thank you all for being here. I guess, I, yeah, I do have a few questions. I'd like to hear a little bit about the, the benefits for parents. So, you know, because childcare is so expensive and I would say, I mean, anywhere from probably 900 to 1500 a month per kid, right? Just, you know, without any, without any assistance. So, so what is out there in terms of Head Start and that, that type of thing?
Sure. I'm happy to talk about that. And I might not have all the data in front of me, but can definitely follow up in terms of amount of children served and.
Sorry, let, let, sorry, excuse me. Councilwoman Wilson, I apologize. I totally spaced out. You wanted to go first. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to mouth thanks to other members quickly. I have another prior engagement at 2:30. I just want to say thank you to the Chair, uh, Councilwoman Gross, and thank you to everyone here. A very important topic. I don't want to, you know, minimize me getting up, uh, or I'm sorry, I don't want to, you know, want you to think I'm getting up because, uh, I'm trying to, yeah. Highly interested. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate all the information. And I'll follow up with my colleagues after. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry.
Yeah. So anyway. Yeah. So just to think about the, the public funding and the programs available to families. Um, so we have the, uh, Public, uh, Pennsylvania Specific Pre-K Accounts Program. That, uh, families, uh, that are eligible for that are up to 300% of, uh, the poverty line. So for a family of four, that's about 112,000, uh, a little over 112,000 a year for a family of four. Uh, that is a, you know, high quality, that pro- program that typically it can occur in a STAR three or four center or group home, center-based or group home. It could also is a many-school district. So Pittsburgh Public is, you know, does have pre-k, pre-k accounts grant as well as, and they partner with a lot of the childcare programs in the city, um, to make sure that there is that mixed delivery system. I think the important thing with that is it technically, it tends to be four to six hours. So families still need that like wraparound childcare. And then we do have the, we have federal Head Start, as well as Pennsylvania Invest in, uh, the Head Start Supplemental Assistance Program, which is additional money to go to Head Start grantees who, it typically can help them serve more children, offer longer hours. And Head Start is, is a program that's up to 100% of the poverty. So for a family of four, that's about, uh, 30,000 a year. And then the Childcare Works Subsidy, that is the childcare subsidy program. We get a lot, we have money from the federal government through the childcare block grant, you know, flows through the state. And then the state, um, that goes to, you know, the Early Learning Resource Center that works with families to determine if they're eligible. That, that, then that family helps set that family up with a program that either is convenient for them in terms of work location, home location. And then that subsidy follows the family to the program. And usually families have a small co-pay. It can be anything. Leslie, you might want to, you know, hop, jump five, five, smallest $5. Um, and that helps the pro- because programs are only, um, I think the important thing with this too is it's a cost that does help families, but programs are only reimbursed at the 60th percentile for that, for that cost. So what the, what they're making from families who are paying out of pocket, it can often take, can often be difficult to, with, with your, with a budget. And families who are eligible for the Childcare Works Program, that's up to 200% of poverty. And for a family of four, that's about $75,000 for, um, a year. So those are, those are really the public sys-, the public programs that support families, making, like, making sure and is, uh, we're serving as many families as possible. And I think that's why it is so important that thinking about how all this funding does work together to make sure we're making it as affordable for as many families as possible.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of wondering how many people are just sort of paying cash to someone in the neighborhood, you know, when they could be actually paying less if they, if they were going to a, a licensed provider and accessing, um, these subsidies. Um, yeah. And then I guess, I'm also curious, I mean, this would maybe just be for the URA, but, you know, in terms of the locations, I mean, I understand how hard that can be, right, to find a location. Um, has there ever been any talk of sort of like a, like a coworking space that sort of where you could have like multiple providers in one space that were like the spa-, you know, I don't know if it would be the city or the county or whoever would, would own, operate the space, but then, and that could maybe help people get off the ground or?
That's a great suggestion. Uh, we haven't pursued something, uh, that, like that in terms of a coworking space, but we, um, continue to figure out how we can be helpful in this realm of identifying affordable brick and mortar space for participants. We talked to, you know, several different providers over the course of a year, um, to see, you know, what was really needed. And ultimately, unfortunately, the URA doesn't have the ability to basically like be your broker in addition to, you know, providing your loan as well. Like, I wish we could do it all, but unfortunately we can't. Uh, but we did create a rental readiness, readiness checklist and a toolkit, though we have. But we did create a rental readiness checklist and a toolkit that we have given to entrepreneurs to say, here's the things you need as you're approaching a landlord, just to make sure that they're going in armed with all the knowledge that they should have in order to negotiate a lease. But I love that suggestion, and it's certainly something I think we should consider in terms of it, we have some, you know, spaces we could look at.
I mean, I just know, like, right in my neighborhood, there's an old school that's for sale, you know, and it has a playground right next door and et cetera. So, I don't know. Just a thought. It's a big, I mean, it's not huge, but it's an old school, so it's a decent building and.
See, yeah, it feels like, yeah, we could, I think, think more boldly about this in terms of downtown and also different facilities that are needed, I think, in childcare deserts throughout the city as well. I think it's certainly something that, that we should, you know, be taking a look at more.
Yeah, or maybe like potential providers coming together and work, you know, sort of teaming up resources and whatnot.
Right.
And then, you know, if you have four people interested in opening a childcare business, then maybe they wouldn't need staff, if all four of them worked together, right? I don't know. Just an idea.
Absolutely.
So, at any rate, I don't really have any other questions besides that. You know, this is, I'm very familiar with this myself. I have four kids and, you know, paid a lot of money for childcare. There was talk at one point of holding some of my younger kids back because they were, you know, early, and it was like, no! They're going to school. So I definitely get it. So, yeah, thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburg?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Madam Chair, for calling this post-agenda hearing. These are conversations I think a lot of us have been having as one-offs for the last several years, and so I'm really glad we're all coming together to discuss this. Just to Councilwoman Warwick's point, I mean, I think of the Whiteman School, which is now Carriage House Child Care, Child Center, and that was a school, it was Whiteman School, that was acquired by the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition for a dollar, so that the Carriage House can move from Chatham University to there, and it operates as a community center, bottom floor, basement and first floor childcare, upper floors rented out to tenants to use as space.
That's where we.
And Trying Together! And then top floor community auditorium space. I mean, like, can we replicate that model in Greenfield? Can we replicate that model with some of the schools that are, school buildings that are no longer, just posing it as a question? It's a really interesting feat that was accomplished forty years ago and could be today. So before I zoom in, I wanted to zoom out a little bit and just share my thoughts more broadly on this issue, and that is, one, that I was heartened by sort of this, this sort of, I don't know, this eureka moment that a lot of people had during the shutdown portion of the pandemic of childcare not just being a, it was discussed a lot, that childcare wasn't just a woman's issue or a family issue, it is an economic issue, and we should treat it as such. And I make it an economic policy issue nationwide, not just something that families have to sort of like scrounge around to figure out. I'm a little bit worried, I have to admit nationwide, that the rhetoric is changing, and as we're sort of losing that momentum we had for making bold policy changes. I was sort of hopeful that maybe there'd be some federal policy that would establish like universal pre-k, universal preschool funding for, you know. But I guess, just to kind of take that vein real quickly, I've heard of more states going that direction and funding essentially universal pre-k or universal preschool. I'm curious, like Emily or others, what would that mean? Like, what would that, what would that mean kind of on the micro level or here in Pittsburgh? Would there be challenges? Would there be pain points? Or like, what would that mean for kind of, how would that compare to sort of the piecing together of programs and funding that we currently operate with from the URA, from the state, from the county, from the city?
I'm happy to start, and others, please chime in. I mean, when I think about that, I do, I, we do have to realize, too, at the state level this year, we didn't have funding, a level of increased funding in pre-k for the first time in a decade. And I know that there, there's about a hundred, a hundred-one thousand children eligible for pre-k that still don't have access. We do have a long way to go. And I, when I think about some of those challenges, I go back to that, the mixed delivery system as well for childcare, when thinking about, we have, you know, our center-based, our home-based programs, and also that it's operating in school districts. So when we think about expanding, I think, thinking creatively about all the spaces, but also the meeting the needs of the families, knowing that pre-k, and if we expand pre-k and it does, it's something we, we get to closer to universal, that making sure that we're expanding it to meet the needs of all families and to meet the needs of those programs. So thinking about, you know, it's not just occurring in a school, a school building, it's also occurring in the home-based or in the center-based where there could be those wraparound services that are outside of those school hours. So I think that's one of the really important pieces, when I think about the equity of expansion, is really making sure we're offering supports that it is, the mixed delivery system is still there and that we're meeting all the needs of families. And so I think it's something we have to keep talking about, and I think it's something we have to keep pushing for, because we know that there's so many children who could still benefit from being enrolled in pre-k. I mean, we hear from kindergarten teachers all the time about how they can tell when a, when a child has had that high-quality pre-k experience. And so what would, and especially coming out of the pandemic, thinking about some of those social and emotional skills that have been lost, that they didn't have those interactions, and I think we, I'm hopeful that we can get back to that national attention, right? That it's so important, as we're really thinking about, we're recovering from learning loss, but it's that social-emotional learning loss, too. And I think that'll be something also important to consider when we're thinking about really expanding and meeting the needs of every, of every child.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And if, and others, okay. I, I do feel like there's potentially more that the city can do. I mean, there are limits, and I know that there's the county, the county office of childhood development and early learning, and we have, like, so many, we have, hey, obviously, so many different, but to the extent that there are opportunities for the city to play a role, I'm really, I'm just going to throw out some ideas that came out of some research our wonderful former intern did earlier this year, that other cities were able to implement, and just like, get your thoughts. Because like, if we could come up with a package of bills from council this year, early next year, I think it would be fabulous to, you know, replicate the work that the Women's Caucus did in the past, but maybe even expand it and think more broadly. So, like, I hear what you're saying about, I know that some of the state funding is, whether it's directed towards childcare workers or, you know, employed in the childcare industry, if they're not in the brick and mortar childcare center, they are missed if they're like at a place that is an after-school learning place, but it also considers, like, they're not getting the benefits as, in the same way that, I guess, other workers might be in the brick and mortar locations, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so I'll start with Phoenix. Phoenix built a childcare center at their airport. I'm pleased that our airport also just replicated that, so thanks to Christina Cosotis and their leadership and county leadership. Richmond distributed five hundred thousand to support private businesses that offer childcare services but are ineligible for grants from the city. So there's that. I mean, I don't know, I'll skip over that one for now, because it seems like it's a slightly different model there. Boise reduced barriers to working in the industry by allowing temporary licenses for workers who have completed state and local background checks but not yet federal, and cover the cost of license applications and CPR and first aid classes for new workers. Is that a barrier you're seeing? Would that be like a pretty easy barrier to remove on our end, or is that?
I'm sorry. There are programs that do pay for CPR and different things like that. So we already have those things in place.
You already have them in place.
The one thing about DHS, there are just some things that there's no wiggle room or bending. And in terms of those clearances and different things like that, and there are things throughout, you know, time that have changed the reasoning for that, some incidents that have occurred that changed the landscape in terms of why we need to have those clearances, like, right up front, and to assure that we do have quality people in place. And so there is monies for that. In terms of, I know Emily was talking about before, this whole pre-k, and I would love to have universal pre-k, but I know for me, that wouldn't benefit half of my families. And here's why. Universal pre-k would limit itself to a certain time. Right now, kids get out of school at two-thirty. My parents are still at work at two-thirty. Who's picking those kids up? Where are they going once they get picked up? And so that then causes my, my families to be put in positions where they're not able to work the type of jobs that they could work. A lot of them work in the hospitals. A lot of them work twelve-hour shifts, or they work overnight, or they work weekends. And so universal pre-k is only a means of satisfying a small population, not a, not a big enough one, that it would be something maybe realistically that we could probably pursue. So we have to look at this whole mixed delivery system where we're, we're able to accommodate everybody within that. You know what I mean? So I would love to have it, but there are some limitations with having that in terms of some of the families that we definitely would not be able to meet.
And so what I'm hearing is that if we had it, it would be a both and. It would be like, no, 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 state, we don't want, don't take the money away, because we're going to shift it over for the after-school portion of the childcare, or whatever it is.
Right, and even them, they're only open until six. They're open until six, and if you work till midnight, what do you do?
Right.
You know what I mean? Or if you work till three in the morning?
Right.
What do you do? And if you have to be to work at four in the morning, what do you do? So, so there's, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of parameters, or there's a lot of things that we definitely need to consider when we're talking about this. I'm different, because I do have a non-traditional facility, and so my people work all kinds of shift throughout the day, evening, whatever. And so I can speak to, to this whole childcare thing from a different, from a different place, because I see a whole lot that other childcare facilities don't see, because they close traditionally at six o'clock. I'm still at work at six, you know? So I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know, what's the best way for us to utilize all the resources in the best way that it meets the needs of everybody, and not just focus on a specific group or a specific population or whatever. How do we meet those needs?
And that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, and that's basically, how do we meet them?
Yeah.
What do we do?
That's a challenge. The further up the government you go, the more cookie cutter it gets, and it doesn't meet all the needs.
Absolutely.
So then it's left to us to sort of be flexible and help meet those needs.
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. Salt Lake City allocated ten million dollars to build neighborhood centers across the city that would be accommodation of childcare, job, job training and assistance locations. Now, we have, you know, some of that in certain ways, or we have a lot of sort of out-of-school-time providers around the city, around the county. But, you know, I do think it would be interesting to sort of map out where the gaps are, both location and timing. And, you know, say, out-of-school time goes, in some cases, until four, like, are there needs until eight P.M.? Or where is that, and what are the needs? And, you know, can we take the centers, both city and partners that are already in operation, like the Boys and Girls Cup, or like the, you know, kind of Family Resource Center model, and ensure that there's childcare there? The other thing that I'm, that's sort of related to this, and I'm just going to ask as a question, is, is the idea of empty ground floors of residential buildings, and sometimes they just stay empty for years and years because they can't find, like, the Dunkin' Donuts that's going to go in there. Can that be a childcare center? Are there, you know, I recognize that sometimes the big tall residential buildings are not being built in the places where there's a childcare desert, but, you know, how can we be creative about the space that we're using from schools to buildings, ground-floor buildings, to, you know, wherever, to make sure that there's, there's just, there's enough for everybody to not be on these wait lists anymore, in the places where we need them? I don't know, it's a lot, but I'd love to hear any kind of response to those ideas.
There's so many great ideas, so I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, the research your intern did, so kudos to them. I really hear you on that empty space, on the ground floor, the empty commercial space, where I think landlords are waiting for, like you said, a national chain or a bank, you know, ATM bank to easily go in there. If, I would like to, you know, be creative with you in terms of how we could incentivize landlords to activate that space, and, you know, the URA can certainly be a partner in considering that and how we can talk about that more. I don't know what it would look like, and I'm sure we would need your help, you know, but I'll definitely take a look into it especially.
And I can just add to that, from working with people who are trying to find spaces, sometimes when landlords hear that it's a childcare facility, that's the end of the conversation. So they just see liability. Some are holding off on better times, so that is a challenge. We have, ironically, we've had a few who have looked at schools. You mentioned schools in the areas, and one is working right now in Arlington at an old Pittsburgh school. The zoning there has been challenging, and from what I've heard from other people who've looked at property, second floors are really hard to get zoned. So that's just another area as well. Maybe trying to get open, talk more about that, but that is some feedback I've got. So if you're, you're purchasing a building, but you can only use fifty percent of it, then there's a difficulty, and what do you do with the other areas and property? So, yeah.
Well, those are all the questions I have. I want to leave room for my colleagues. Thank you so much for, like, entertaining my wacky ideas and just, like, helping to respond to them so I could get a full picture. And, you know, I'm not the only one who's had these ideas, clearly, but like, I, I think that we, I'm optimistic about working creatively with colleagues, mayor's office, URA, et cetera, all of you, to make sure that, the county, to make sure that we can put some of these into action. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I want to thank you for, you know, pursuing and keeping on this. She knows where to hit me and what's, what's personal to me, which this subject is, I will tell you. So we've engaged over the last couple of years. I'm glad to finally say we're sitting at the table, so it's a great, great achievement just being here at the table. So, as I said, it's very personal to me. My mother was a single mom, had three boys, I was the youngest. We shared a bedroom about as big as this table here. And we had no means, we had nothing. We had no income. She was, you know, my father kind of split the scene, and what did she do? She started babysitting kids, okay? And she was really, really good at it, you know? The people, the kids loved her, the parents loved her. And Ms. Crawford, you run a facility, do you not?
I did.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I do.
Did you start out of your home?
I did.
Did you?
I did. I started as a family, a daycare home. I did.
All right. So if you can imagine, three boys in a two-bedroom house.
Yeah.
And at one time, at her height, I'll bet you there was fifteen to seventeen kids, from diapers to eight, nine, ten-year-olds, you know? We hated it, of course, you know? I mean, we were like, oh, my gosh, no peace, right? We had no peace. I didn't appreciate it at the time, how hard. It was incredibly hard work.
Yes, it is.
It was incredibly, incredibly hard work.
Yes, it is.
And I will say, you know, her, she, this was all under the table at the time, you know, she didn't set up a business, you know, she didn't, she was just worried about feeding us, okay? So, so, but the kids flocked to her, and, you know, they knew her, she was great with raising us, and she was great with raising other people. And to this day, I remember the day she died, honest to God, 25 to 30 kids that she took care of and helped raise were there, crying, right next to me. And I just thought, what an impact that she had. So you have an incredible impact, you have the opportunity to have an incredible impact outside the parenting. So, so I really, really respect what you do. I've seen it firsthand with my mom, and I saw what it meant to the kids, and it really did, it was really good.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So, how would you, and it sounds to me like what you're really, you're, and I'm sorry I missed the first part of the meeting, and some of the presentation, but it sounds to me what your real goal is to help people like my mother, who are taking on kids and, you know, people are paying them, they watch them all day while they're at work, to try to set up where they're a legal, legitimate business. Is that the goal?
Yes, yes, so it's special for family child providers, yes, you know, to make sure that they get licensed, so they get access to the resources that are out there, and also to, to think more as a business owner, because if they do want to move their business or grow from the home to a center, then they're starting off on the right track. They have things in place in order to do that.
And that's really the point, isn't it? I mean, in order to apply for resources, you have to be on the books, right? You're not going to get a refrigerator from somebody, because if you, you know, if you're not paying taxes and you're in on a books, forget about it, right? So, so, so is, what's the biggest challenge from taking somebody like my mother, who has, say, four or five children they're watching at home, who knew nothing about business, of course, or how to operate one? What's the biggest challenge from getting them from there to where they operate and can apply for such services and be on the books like they should be?
Well, to, some people will choose to remain family providers, and that's what they're comfortable at doing. My mother was a family provider, and she remained for her whole life doing it.
When you say family provider, you mean?
In the home, in the home, yes, and I think it's up to six kids, correct?
Yeah, for the family care home.
For the family, yes. So, and some people will choose to do that, that's what they're comfortable with, you know, and again, you wanna make sure that they're licensed to do that. So when opportunities come about, whether it's to the city, or to the state, or to the federal government, and resources, they can tap into those resources, because if they're, if they're not licensed, and they're, the own people don't know, they can't access those, so that's a really important thing. The hurdle from going from, what I've seen, from family-based to a, out of the home, right, is, is a lot of it's money, okay? So, if the margins are pretty tight in what you're doing, it's gonna take a long time to save that money in order to make a deposit on a property, right? And then you're getting into the wild, wild west, because if you've never purchased a property before, it's different from mortgage for your home, you know, you're dealing with legal documents that you haven't seen before, you're dealing with the probability of, you know, a lot of other criteria that's out there to meet those needs. So, I mean, part, that's part of our goal, is to help them feel more comfortable in understanding those legal and financial situations that may come about, but also taking a route that is feasible for them, right? So that includes their space, you know, when looking at a space, and I'm like, okay, but in order to renovate that space and then open it up, it's gonna cost you X amount of money, and given the code and regulations, you, the maximum you can have is 46 kids. So if we do 46 kids by X dollars that you can bring in every week, which is X dollars every month, that won't pay your rent. So then we go back to the board, and we have to start all over again. So it, there is, you know, there's a lot of factors there, I think in terms of the dollars they can bring in, and, in order to pay those costs, yeah. So, affordable space is the challenge.
I also just wanna thank Ann and her team at Chatham for the technical assistance and business education that they, they give home-based providers and, you know, startup providers as well. We get a lot of folks that wanna open a business at the URA, and they might not even have a business bank account yet. So in order to be, you know, to receive different grant opportunities, to receive loans, like, you have to be a legitimate business, you have to register with the city, you have to pay your taxes. Ann's team at Chatham meets with folks one-on-one and talks them through that, and then the Business of Childcare supplements that as a course. So, we get folks really understanding what it means to be a business owner. I just can't thank Ann or team enough for what they do.
Really, it sounds like wonderful work you do.
Yeah, and again, you know, some bits just the unknown, you know, so, for instance, we helped a lot of people who did go through the program or in operation, fill out the CRIB program that Katrin was talking about, the application first. And they were like, okay, so what's, what's a forgivable loan? Is it a grant? Or what, like, how do I get forgiven? Like, what do I have to do? So those kind of things, you know, it's something, just something new, it's different. It's a loan, or it's a grant, or it's a forgiven, or how does it work? And, you know, I try and explain to people, you have to use funds for the purpose that they were provided, so let's talk about what you're gonna do. And then they'll tell me, and I'm like, no, 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 not that one, so we'll move along. And, so, yeah, so it's just, you know, just sitting down and talking with people, but, you know, going into a center, and, and Ms. Crawford, I'm sure can explain as well, there is costs involved, responsibility when you're hiring people, that's a lot of people decide to stay in the home, because then you have responsibility of employees. So this is a big undertaking, but it doesn't mean it's not achievable. A lot of people achieve it every single day.
For, for a home provider, is it, they have to meet the same criteria as a brick-and-mortar? As far as like insurance and licensing and all of that, right?
Yeah, so for, yeah, the family childcare homes and the group childcare homes, which the group childcare can take up to 12 children, they are licensed, 12 to 15? They are licensed by DHS, just like a center. And I think, you know, something that, you know, we've seen is it can be, and, you know, why the, you know, some, this funding is so helpful for them, is the barriers to overcome that can often be more challenging, because there's only, there could sometimes only be one of them, or there's another, one other staff person, depending on how many children they're serving. And I think the other, the other piece of the puzzle in thinking about childcare in the home is to bring up relative care providers, which I believe many have enrolled, many have enrolled in or are working to become family, family childcare homes.
Correct.
Which, yeah, so relative childcare provider, and there are relative childcare providers, that's typically, there's, you know, not caring for more than three children that are related to them, so that could be a grandmother caring for three grandchildren, and they could, they could also be eligible for subsidy, depending on pieces. So they could also make, be making sure that, that they could be being paid for care by the public dollars in the state.
And you teach business practices. I remember my mother, prospective client, we'll call it, would, you know, come and be talking to her, and they'd say, well, what do you charge? And she would say, oh, whatever you can afford. But, you know, I, I was nine, 10 years old at the time, so I couldn't really put much of an argument, but, yeah, to teach somebody how, first of all, you have to raise your prices, when you're talking licensing, insurance, you know, it's, uh, becomes very costly. So you really have to teach them how to operate a business, and you teach that.
Yes, exactly, exactly, you know, and the individuals, when they start the program, you know, we, we start, why are you doing this? Why, why is motivating you to do this? And nearly every single one will talk about the love of taking care of children, all right? I have, will say, I have heard a lot from, you know, the last class we had meet here, correct? There was a lot of individuals were saying, I want to open a facility or do it in my home for kids that have special needs, because I can't find a place for my kid to go. One of our clients actually, who was in the last class, you know, went to grad school and is opening a facility for children who are deaf. So, that, that's, you know, another area as well of childcare, because parents can't find facilities. So there is, you know, some specialized there, but it's just in terms of seeking opportunities and, that are out there, and, and teaching them in that area as well, in terms of keeping records, you know? And, and again, it's a very regulated industry, so you have to keep good records. And, you know, I talk to people, you know, you balance your household income every month, you know, what you, what you can buy at the store and you can't, so it's the same thing here, just needs to, kind of relate it to things that they're doing.
Sure, sure. Well, you know, I wanna thank you for the work you do. I'm all in, whatever this council comes up with, you know, to help childcare provider. I was lucky, I had it for free, that's one of the benefits of my mother being, well, I wouldn't say in the business, because she never really was officially in business. No, she was in the business, sorry, but, but not according to the government, and not according to services that she could apply for, and I, quite frankly, I don't think those services were there then. I don't know, yeah, right, yeah.
I don't think that they were.
Right, right, right. Well, again, I wanna thank you for being here, Councilwoman Gross, thank you. Again, count me in as full participant as to whichever way we go, and things we come up with to help provide for you all here at the table.
Thank you, Councilman. I am just gonna wrap us up here soon, but I do, when I take a few minutes, just to, again, thank all of the speakers, your work is making a difference in the city. And as you hear, I think that this council has a will to do more, so we can do better. We're already doing better, those numbers that you shared at the beginning, that we have a higher number of centers at a higher ranking, at 57%, is higher than Allegheny County and higher than the state at large. I've also had in the preparation for the meeting, heard numbers that there was something like 50,000 seats lost across the state since the beginning of the pandemic. And at least for the programs that we are able to reach, we didn't lose those centers, and in fact, they grew, right? So they, they raised wages, they added workers, and they added kids that they were serving, right? And so we have really, with great timing, we were really lucky that we launched and expanded these programs throughout 2021. And if, if, you don't mind, I'm gonna invite, we've had the deputy mayor in the room, so I'm gonna invite the deputy mayor to the table, because maybe he has a handle on, like, are these dollars all expended? And I just wanted to recap that, because I'm not sure we articulated that super clearly either. It was $2 million that, I think my staff put the notes in front of me, it was $2 million that city council moved, first it was $250,000 that city council moved in December of 2014 for community facilities into the 2015 city budget, as well as creating the position for early childcare and some other things, doing a study of where childcare centers were, which it sounds like we need updating. And there have been studies in between, independent studies. And then, it was in 20, I think it was December 2018, the $2 million, no, it was earlier than that, $2 million moved into the city budget to, to increase that. And then they kind of stayed separate pots, and then, so it was December 2019, that I moved the $250,000 that was still left over to the URA, to do the micro lending, especially for the small centers, but then that grew and changed, because PNC matched it with 1.5 million. So anyway, Director Paul, could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, Jake Paul, I'm Deputy Mayor, Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for the opportunity just to chime in here a bit at the end, and thank you to all the panelists, both for your, your thoughts and the contributions you've made to today's discussion, but also the really important work you're doing around this issue. Councilwoman, to answer your question, at this point, it's my understanding, and there, there's probably some, you know, fine, finer detail here to, to get to the final accounting, but in essence, all of the funding that was, has been made available in the way you just very accurately described, has been at this point committed. Some of that funding has not yet, you know, moved into programming, and so there are, there remain to be, you know, funds that have been awarded to folks that are not yet being spent, and so we will continue to see an impact on an increasing number of spots as that funding is fully realized in the market, or in, in, in this space, right? But, but we, we have since 2019, which, as you rightly point out, is, is five years after the funding was originally, since the funding was originally conceived of, that's when it actually started to move. And, and you, and Council President Kail Smith, and former council members Rudy Akk and Harris really deserve a lot of credit for that, having been here at the time that that was occurring. Essentially, we've found a way since 2019 to, to at least get the process rolling on all, putting all of that money to work, primarily through, as has been discussed here today, making investments in the existing providers to improve the physical conditions in the places where they're providing their services, so as to increase the capacity of kids they can serve. As that initial allocation sort of winds down, we're committed, at least to continuing that work moving forward, while at the same time looking for, taking these learnings that have been discussed today, and determining what the long-term best way to preserve that into the future might be, which might also involve other levels of government. But we're, we're working presently to identify funds, with existing funds largely within the city's federal support, like the CDP, excuse me, CDBG program, to, to provide additional funding to keep this program operational for another year or two, as we continue to work with all of the folks around the table today, and with council, to determine whether that's the best way to do it indefinitely into the future, or whether ultimately there's a different way to fund the program.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, that's really encouraging news. We know that, that, this, once, since these programs are in place, it's a lot easier to keep them going than it is to dismantle them and then try to recreate them.
Absolutely.
Right? And I was hearing, I seem to be on pace. Emily, do you mind recapping for me? Did your money just start moving in 2021, really, getting out the door?
So with the Allegheny Department of Human Services, and in partnership with them, and the city of Pittsburgh, like, I know there was a committee moving, and that's when they started administering the fund, in June of 2021.
2021, so we, it's flying out the door, we know there's demands, and so we, we had the opportunity to keep it going. So it took a long time to get from allocation until actually going out the door, so I wanna thank you, Deputy Mayor, for helping to make that happen, and for your commitment to keeping it going.
Sure.
So I appreciate that. Are there any other final questions from members? Great, well, we'll have a lot more conversation, but today, we're gonna wrap it up, so I'm gonna call this post-agenda adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.